Hopefully, everybody's got an agenda. There's a motion to adopt the agenda. To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. opposed? Okay, adopted in minutes. I didn't realize, owing to my inexperience and so forth, that they were all on board docs. So, the only ones that I've seen is the regular meetings. So, I would like to defer January 10 and January 29 until our next meeting. That's on eight. January 15, regular meetings. There are most of them approved or any corrections? Okay, with those, I did have a correction for the 10, but you want to move them to next month? Work sessions, yeah. So, I didn't know they were done. If there's no corrections, I'm overly adopted. Right, January 15.
January 15.
Is it a second?
I have one, I have one more correction. Page three at the bottom. This was an overburden, it's an overburden of the regular.
So, no, then, any further corrections? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I vote aye. So, they're approved as amendments. And the other two are deferred until the next meeting. No public hearings, public comment. We don't have any public hearings, so you can comment on anything, hopefully something pertaining to the planning commission. Yes, ma'am. Say your name and whatever.
Patty Curry, Hampton District. I just want to know if you're going to introduce Brian. I didn't hear him introduced last week. I mean, last month. The new planning commission.
He won't be introducing me either.
We all know you.
I see. Well, all right. Well, I know we actually introduced him at the work session. The work session, so that's why I guess I'm going to do that.
Oh, yeah.
So, it gives me a great honor to introduce our new member from Wakefield District, Brian Shulman. Here, here. Fourth meeting, so welcome.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Fraser, some new members, so welcome. All right. Any other further, or any further public comments? Okay, hearing done, the public comment period is closed. New business. Our first name is zoning, Z, 1P dash 01 dash 06, text amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would it be too early to ask for a point of order?
What is it? Go ahead. It's never too early to ask for a point of order.
I think when we're looking at the text amendment, whether it's the ordinance or possibly a map as well, it's supposed to be supported by a narrative explaining how it fits the comprehensive plan. And we don't have that, what I found in this application for a text amendment. And then, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, I have an even bigger problem. We appear to be piecemealing the Highway Commercial Zone. And I think maybe the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission should have a more overall, you know, broader overall look at what's happening in Sperryville. Because we piecemealed with the commercial zoning there at the Old Hovel Store. And then, we piecemealed again prior to that with the, you know, the golf course. And then, there was the driving range. And we're not really looking at this as the big picture. It's just a piecemeal approach at, looking at, you know, rezoning parts of Sperryville. I think that we can do better than that. So, I recommend that we send this to the Board of Supervisors for some input from them.
How is that? Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
For a second? I'm going to discuss it.
Well, you know, I don't think...
We have a second. We've got a motion, but no second.
I thought you said discussion.
Well, only you came to have the discussion, so you have a second to the motion. So, somebody want to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right. So, any discussion on this?
Mr. Henry? You know, apparently, of course, there's probably deficiencies in the Highway Commercial definition of permitted uses and things like this. And when you look at the map, you know, it's kind of hodgepodge and, you know, they kind of used the river as a boundary and, and I don't know what sort of logic that was used up there. But we recognized a long, a decade ago, that, you know, with the change in the skyline drive and traffic and everything, that whole route up through there was a dying area of Rappahanna County. And you had fruit stands that were closed, rotted down, fallen down. You had houses that were dilapidated, stores closed, and there's a whole, the place was decaying. It was the worst, I guess, worst economic decaying section in all of Rappahanna County. And we had some discussions back 2014 years ago to kind of make that an economic zone and to allow more wide open uses and things in there. And that never got traction with the Board and never happened. So, you know, we should be very happy that citizens have bought property in this area over the last five, six, seven, eight years and made substantial improvements. You got Parkway, you got property across the street from Parkway where they put in a restaurant and spent all the money there making that an example of a green business. You come on down the road and, you know, the same thing. And you got Mr. Chapman buying these dilapidated sheds, might as well call them, and trying to do something. You got to know it now, so, you know, to get with the Board of Supervisors and go through a process with them and be a year down the road and try to do something. And I don't think it's fair to the applicants that are coming in and questioning to do something to hold them up.
That has some sound legitimacy to it, but again, if we just do it in this hodgepodge method, all we're doing is allowing each individual person that has an idea to change the total direction of the, you know, the zone.
I don't necessarily think that what he's proposing here is a dramatic, substantial change of direction.
Not by itself, but, you know, when you couple it with several others that have happened and we, like I say, it's just a hodgepodge effect. And I don't think that's the proper way to design it.
Well, all we got to do now is a motion to table. I don't think we should be talking about the merits of it or the lack of merit of it.
Well, it's talking about a motion to table to kind of put it into a dark room to get with the Board of Supervisors on something that's going to happen not next month, not the month after that, maybe in 2020, but maybe not.
We don't know that. We don't have the same board we had for a while. We might have a board that...
All right. Well, here's my issue, and then we, because I, I mean, I would support the motion to table it maybe for a different reason. And that is, the way I read the ordinance and I've conferred a little bit with Mr. Curry on it, the ordinance is a little ambiguous in terms of what kind of amendments can be made by individual landowners. It's very clear that if a landowner applies for a rezoning, they can do that. And it's not so clear about a text amendment, because the section of the ordinance, 170 dash 134, talks in a way that part of what has to be submitted is, one, a narrative about how it's compatible with the comprehensive plan, and, two, like a map of the property that's proposed to be rezoned. So, it isn't 100% clear, and to me, and rather than error and then maybe have something, if we did it, that isn't valid because we didn't go through the right steps, it seems to me that this should be referred back to the Board of Supervisors and they should send it, if they want to, send it to us, because that's the way text amendments are supposed to originate. And so, I don't know if Mr. Curry wants to speak to that. I know he sent me some...
Are you asking me to speak?
I think he's telling you.
No, I'm asking you.
I mean, it's the planning commission that likely to speak to it. The state code and the local code is clear that text amendments can originate by motion of the planning commission or resolution of the Board. And it is, I said in an email to Mr. Conne, muddy as to how property owners, whether they have the right to apply for a text amendment.
Well, directly to the planning commission.
Well, to anybody, I guess. But I suppose if a property owner was inclined to seek a text amendment, they could prevail upon the planning commission to pass a motion to do so if you thought it was appropriate. If you didn't think it was appropriate, I guess, you wouldn't do that. But I've, I think that's, the muddiness is probably something the zoning administrator and the county attorney should render an opinion.
Okay, well...
Because that practice has been done here, at least twice in the two years, I think. The citizen or property in the block or something.
If I could, I think that it's not completely clear, but I think it's very clear that there needs to be a narrative how it would align with the comprehensive plan, and we don't have that.
Right. So, that's what I'm suggesting. If it's going to be tabled on account of that, the applicant can go back to the Board of Supervisors at their March meeting. There's time to get that on the agenda and ask them to send it back to us and get their kind of preliminary...
Mr. Curry just stated it could begin with us. And as a planning group, I don't see why we need to bug it to the Board and why not we address it and then we send it to the Board.
Okay. Well, we could do that, that's right. So, what's the pleasure of it? Right now, we got a motion to table it on two bases, right?
It's an incomplete application.
One, it's incomplete, they don't have the narrative, and two, we got this issue, this kind of deal, the issue that we don't have an opinion on.
Well, we have...
Let me ask the zoning administrator, did you have time to ask Mr. Graff for an opinion?
No.
All right, so...
But I made it for...
Well, I guess, you know, we can bounce it to next month to either group, or we can tackle this next month ourselves. You know, I think we're given some direction here to somebody, I don't know whether it's to the applicant or to the zoning administrator, to address how this fits into the comprehensive plan. I guess it's not a bad starting place to hear from the applicant on what he's doing and how this came about and what initiated his discovery of this error or emptiness in the plan, so that we can build from there.
If it's an incomplete application, we have no business hearing it.
All right, so...
So, I feel like we're sort of having two parallel arguments. One, about the facts of a...
You're not going to start a thorough one?
I don't think so. It's always a risk. You know, whether this is an application that is properly before us, I mean, I think it's a good question, but I think, but what I'm hearing, you know, the sort of partial application isn't that different than if a public comment period, Mr. Chapman stood up and said, "I think you guys should consider changing the zoning ordinance to allow offices in Highway Commercial." And Mr. Henry thought that was a good idea, and he made a motion to add that. I don't see that there'd be any problem with that if, in that manner. So, I think we're talking about two different things. I think we could move it forward in that, in that direction if we were sort of inclined. So, I don't, I think we're not stymied in our ability to address this from my, from my perspective and based on what I hear people saying. From my perspective, I feel like the way this has been put before us, it is lacking a little bit. We talked about one of the things with respect to comprehensive plan. The other is, this sort of feels like it's headed in the right direction of more of an adaptive reuse rather than a wholesale zoning change. And so, I have some concerns of that sort, you know, on the substance of the matter. I know we're not, we don't want to get too deeply into the substance of it. But as to whether this is somehow a piecemeal approach, I don't really accept that view. I feel like there's always going to be things around the edges or exceptions. And of course, we take those up as they come to our attention. And I think that's just doing our job, not doing something contrary to zoning. If we had, if we were doing the entire zoning process this way, I might agree with that point. But if we're talking about, you know, selective adjustments, that's just learning and adapting. So, those are my comments.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we got a motion. No. All right, we got a motion and a second right now to table it.
Can I contest what we... I apologize for coming late.
Oh, you're late?
Yes, thank you. Can we just repeat the motion?
Sure. Mr. Fraser made a motion to table it because, one, it's incomplete. It doesn't have the narrative about the comp plan. And also, it really ought to come from the Board of Supervisors. It's a kind of a legal matter, if you read, based on his reading of section 170 dash 134 of the ordinance, which Mr. Curry says, and Michelle just had time, to ask for an opinion from the county attorney. But if the motion passes, I would hopefully suggest something that will take care of that. So, that's the motion to table it.
I wonder if I might just suggest a slight change to the motion, very slight amendment, which would be that we table it, that we defer it. I don't know whether we table it or defer it, but until the planning commission receives that determination from the county attorney and the zoning administrator, essentially as to the extent to which, that's what I was wondering, the extent to which a property owner has a right to a public hearing upon application to the planning commission for a zoning text amendment. So, if we, if, you know, I think my understanding, and I thank, I thank Mr. Conne for bringing this issue up officially, some of our attention, because it's a good question. But my, again, it's based on what Mr. Curry has said. My understanding is that we could, if somebody came in from the public and said, "Hey, this is a good idea," we could do it. So, if we felt that this was a good idea, we could just take upon ourselves to move this on up to the Board of Supervisors. I, so I take it from the discussion that we're not really getting any merit of this, but...
Well, I, I mean, how about this modification of his, of your motion, proposed modification? And that would be, that, well, because I mean, I think, I think in the meantime, if it goes to the Board of Supervisors, then we eliminate the legal question. And since it's incomplete because of the missing narrative, that could be done before our next regular meeting. So, all those technical issues should go ahead. I mean, my concern is sort of for the benefit of the applicant, that if, if we go forward now without a legal opinion and do it, and then it turns out we're wrong, we might have a defective amendment. And that's going to be unfair to the applicant and everybody else. So, if that can be cured by just sending it back to the Board of Supervisors, or sending it back or just sending it to them, they can act at their March meeting and then we can get some clarification from either Michelle or Mr. Curry and...
Well, it's unfair to the applicant for the applicant to be here tonight. I mean, all this shouldn't, shouldn't happen. You know, all this should not happen. If he's here, we thought he had a good application, he had a request or something. You know, he spent the time to be here to do this, and now, you know, we're shuffling the balls that, I don't know, this is what, this is not right. This should all been shifted out a week ago.
The point of order, though, this isn't the public hearing on this.
But, no, no, the...
We can't, we wouldn't be able to make those recommendations without the public hearing to start with.
Well, all this, all of this should have kept this from becoming on the agenda. It was all these issues and questions of where it should begin at should have been addressed before it got to the agenda. And we should not be here with this, either on the agenda or, it's not fair to the applicant.
Is this, is this the first time it showed up on the agenda? Well, then, this is, this is a part of the process. We're reviewing it to see if it's a complete application.
I mean, it's only here for like supposedly a preliminary review, so...
I will agree with Mr. Henry that I think that the application, I felt like the application was deficient and should not have been on the agenda. But how do we deal with it?
But this is exactly what the ordinance...
Well, okay, let me ask you a question, Mr. Col, before we get too far. Hold on a second, just to raise her, and that is, okay, if something shouldn't have been put on the agenda because it's deficient, so the remedy is not to, well, let's go ahead with it anyway.
But, Mr. Chairman, you're, you're the chairman, you're kind of overseer of the agenda. You shouldn't have let this got on the agenda.
All right, I'll take the rap from that dude, inexperience and youth. I'll never let it happen again, because being chastised by you, it's only my second meeting. Letting one is over.
You get one more. You get one more. You know, one, one way to thread this needle might be to, because the applicant is here and because this matters before us, and by some means, it's likely to come back to us, and since we have a motion and we're having discussion, one approach might be to have a little bit more discussion about the merits, which should at least advance the concept.
Well, wait a minute. First, we're going to vote on whether we're going to table it. We're going to take it up, and we're going to go through the preliminary review. If the motion fails, that's what we'll do. So, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion, just on the motion?
So, just to clarify it. So, I thought our motions were so that we could, that would be the basis for starting discussion. And without a motion, we...
Right. So, we've had a discussion, and the motion has been made and seconded. You made an amendment, so is there any second to the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
All right. So, is the amendment...
Yeah, what was that amendment?
Send it back to the...
To defer, defer decision on it until we receive a determination from the county attorney and the zoning administrator to the extent to which he has a right to a public hearing upon applying to the planning commission for a zoning text amendment. If he doesn't, well, let me...
You just didn't get another clause or something.
Without going first to the Board, yeah.
But the other options, I assume what we would have, just again, to clarify this, if I may, if I'm not mistaken, our other options, we have two other options. One would just be to say that this, to deny the application, you know, we don't like what it says, but that would be one option. But you have to discuss it on the merit. The other one would be to, to say that, hey, we don't know whether he has a right to a public hearing or not, but we think this was a great idea to discuss, let's discuss it and take it upon ourselves. So, I just, I just want to make sure I understand that those are our options.
Well, those are the options. If the motion to table passes, that's going to be tabled.
Did you make an amendment to the motion?
I did.
What is that amendment? It's pretty simple, one, two, simple, so I can understand it.
Is that...
To defer until we get an opinion from the county attorney and the zoning administrator about a legal issue of whether or not he can apply and it can come directly to us without being a referral from the Board.
So, is that a difference only in the rationale for deferring it, or is it...
No, it's a legal matter.
So, it's a different potential? Okay, well, I guess it doesn't really matter, I'm not really sure, but Mr. Fraser had already...
So, it's just going to be tabled until next month, if the motion passes. Until they, they'll have a chance to come in with their opinion, and he'll have a chance to cure the defect about the narrative. And if he goes to the Board up in March, whatever the date of the first March meeting is, March 2nd, he can cure that too. I mean, you know, we're having a huge discussion about something that I don't think is really, I mean, the merits of, pretty simple to me, but, I mean, I, because, I'll just say that, you know, there's other offices and so forth that are there. I'm not sure if they're legal or not, but they're there, and I don't think this is a problem. But I just want to, I want to make sure that it's done right, that's all. So, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
Who's issue?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. All right, the motion carries, it's tabled. So, do you have any questions about what you should do now?
Questions, sentiments or questions?
Well...
So, there was no, where on the zoning text amendment request was there room for discussing how an amendment would apply to the comprehensive plan? Because there was none.
Well, no, it's in section 1, it said 170 dash 134.
134.
It says that the application must be accompanied by some narrative, whatever that means, of how it is, how it is compatible with the comp plan. Wait a second, I'll leave it to you.
Shouldn't that be on the application?
Well, maybe it's not a good point, but the planning commission doesn't make up the applications. The Board of Supervisors and their agent make up...
So, the second question is, where to next? Do I have to submit another application?
No, you don't have to submit another application. I think you take your application and go to the Board of Supervisors at their March 2 meeting and ask Mr. Curry or whoever it is that, or your supervisor to put it on the agenda, which I'm certain they'll be happy to do. In the meantime, it's only what it says that's the 19, so you have two weeks. You can write your narrative, and then you'll have a complete application. And then, they'll refer it back to us, and we'll untable it and go forward with our discussion of the merits of it.
It wasn't exactly...
And I apologize to you for convincing you, you know, I agree with Mr. Henry that I should have caught that.
Well, you know, it wasn't...
It was worded on the agenda.
It didn't exactly say narrative, but when you look at his submission here on the background material here and what...
That was, right, that was just handed in today.
That could very well be defined as a narrative, the situation.
Yeah, but it does represent the comp plan.
I don't see a distinction between the planning commission and Board relative to the action forward on a property owner application. I understand the question on whether the Code of Virginia and the Rappahanna County Code supports a property owner application for a text amendment. And that would be a subjective opinion. But either the planning commission or the Board of Supervisors are empowered to start a text amendment, right? And that is very clear.
But that's...
Him taking his application to the Board is no different than him taking his application to you. It's not valid for you, it's not valid to the Board.
No, I think he's got a right to do it, but I mean, I think he's got to, for a text amendment, I think first has to go to the Board. But anyways, here's what I...
What does 170...
170, 134, B1.
What's B3 say?
Well, yeah, the commission could adopt a resolution, but he didn't apply to the commission to adopt it. His application's to the Board for a, for a text amendment. And, but somehow it got straight to us. He didn't apply to us. He applied to the Board. That's what it says on the application.
And that's the same for special exceptions and...
Well, they're the issuing authority, that's why.
That's why he implied it.
So, here, to answer your question, Mr. Chapman, it's called section 170 dash 134, B1. In the first full paragraph, it says, and this is the part that I, what started this, it says, you're, you're, it says, "The petition shall be addressed to the Board." We aren't the Board. "And shall be on standard application form, blah, 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 accompanied by four copies of the meets and bounds and description of the plot of the property proposed for rezoning," well, that's not this, "a conflict of interest statement, which I don't think applies, a fee, and the narrative addressing the compatibility of the request with the adopted comprehensive plan and its goals and objectives." So, that's the part that's missing.
Is it regards to rezoning or text amendment?
Of all of them.
In this particular...
No matter which one it is.
They're one and the same in this particular issue.
And I mean, I don't think that's very...
No, we're not. I'm not asking to rezone my property. I'm asking to put a checkbox under Highway Commercial as it pertains to professional offices.
Right. It's only a text amendment, so...
But it would have the effect of rezoning, because it allows a particular use that's not allowed in those zones now.
Right. So, it's currently Highway Commercial, and you're saying I'm rezoning it to what?
Well, it would be Highway Commercial, but you're, you're asking for...
So, I'm not rezoning my property.
You're asking for, you're asking for more use is allowed currently, so it has a similar effect.
That's not rezoning.
I think he's right.
It has a similar effect.
And you couldn't do a meets and bounds on this because it's...
Well, no, that doesn't apply to this.
That's the entire...
That's why the ordinance needs to be straightened out, because frankly, it's not very clear. All right, so that's what you need to do, the narrative, and, I mean, if you go to the Board, you have time before our next meeting.
So, if the Board comes back to you, then it goes back to the Board?
Well, then, we have to review it again.
Have the public hearing.
And have a public hearing. And quite frankly, if you do that, maybe we'll just have the public hearing next month and put it on, if it's complete, what?
The Board asked us to...
Right. If the Board sends it back to us on March 2, when's our next meeting? Right, if the board sends it back to us on March 2, when's our next meeting? Do we have time for two weeks to put it out and have a public hearing next time? Because we're gonna have to have a public hearing no matter what, so it won't be any delay. We can keep all the merits of it, I think, pretty simple.
Well...
To me, I don't have a problem, honestly, I don't have a problem with that. And really, I can see you're not happy, but it's really for you that I wanna make sure that you don't get a text amendment. I mean, we had a text amendment a few years ago about tourist homes, and like, three or four years later, they turned out, the county attorney said, well, you didn't jump through the right hoops, or you jumped through them in the right order.
Voided.
So it was void. And that's not gonna be fair to you, especially, I understand that you're gonna invest some money in doing it, so I wanna make sure it's done right. And you can do that and cure it, and if you do it by March 2nd, we'll have time to advertise it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you get that squared away, and if you have any questions, feel free to call me, I'll be glad to help you out, whatever you gotta do.
You're really not losing any time, this isn't a public hearing, this is just a preliminary review.
No, I understand that.
So we're not losing anything.
Okay. All right, got any other questions?
I was just gonna say, I think the amendment, the motion that we just passed said we're gonna get... We're deferring it until we get a opinion from the county attorney.
Well, if he... But if he goes back to the board on March 7th, then we don't need that, because then we'll have the thing from the board.
Mr. Chapman? I'm very sorry you have to listen to all these big words and definitions and whatever else is going on, but I think the end result is this, if it's a perfect world in March, I guess maybe the board might vote on this, the board supervisors after the public hearing next month and everything, maybe vote on this in April, and you're hopefully be free to go live on.
March. March. March.
You hear, there and April.
We're gonna have a public hearing in March, we'll vote on it, and the board has to vote on it after that, right? So that's an April board.
Right.
Right.
You're right.
Okay? I heard somebody else in the audience arguing with us.
All right, that's...
Hopefully, we can straighten things out, sorry.
All right. The next item is a review of special exception permit 20 dash 20 dash 01. Miller, more than one dwelling on a lot or parcel. So let's have a report from the zoning administrator on that, and then I'll give a report from the board of zoning appeals on that.
Mr. Miller, on behalf of Mount Vernon Pharma LLC has requested to allow more...
Which one?
One dwelling on a lot or parcel per 170 dash 36A. Mr. Miller obtained two special use permits, 1909-02 and 1910-02, for two tourist homes to be built on this parcel property. By letter dated December 5th, the zoning administrator made a determination that was not appealed, that the parcel would need to be subdivided for each tourist home as they are considered a dwelling unit. As part of the BZA's approval of the two tourist homes, the Millers needed to divide the property or seek a special exception permit for more than one dwelling on a lot or parcel. The health department comments remain the same from their special use permit application for the tourist homes, that they could not comment until they have received a well-invested application for the property. VDA has commented by email that they have reviewed this on paper and in the field and don't see any major issues. They note that they would recommend that the existing entrance be removed once the new one is installed, but my office has yet to receive anything official from them.
What, you said what?
A letter from VDA.
It says it's...
On there.
All right, you want to hand that?
I've also got a letter from Ash.
Oh, what is the letter?
Just sort of a comment on...
Where's our balance?
Operations.
Okay, this looks like the same thing that Michelle reported on. This is a letter about the entrance, and now... I'll just report on what the BZA did with this. We sort of, after the planning commission reviewed this last fall, the BZA kinda had an issue about whether or not it could be approved, or whether it should be... About the subdividing of the property into two 10 acre lots, and cutting that off, and some members of the BZA weren't happy about that, and apparently the applicants really didn't wanna do that, but sort of were told that they needed to do that. And so we didn't... The BZA didn't see why, since it's a 700 what?
Seven...
Seven ninety. It's around seven ninety.
Okay, it's almost an 800 acre tract, and we didn't see any reason why couldn't just apply for two dwellings on the lot, so that was sort of the... To accommodate them and accommodate the concerns of the board of zoning appeals and tourists, that's what was approved. The two tourist homes, subject to them getting without dividing it, subject to the approval of an SE permit by the board of supervisors for more than one dwelling in the lot, and that way they won't be violating the density of 125. That's what the concern was at the BZA, was that having two 10 acre lots beside them and violate the one dwelling unit for 25 acres, because someday, then maybe there won't be tourist homes, they'll just be regular residential single-family units. So that's why they're here, because that's what the BZA told them to do. So I think it's only fair that, I mean, if it's already kind of a recommendation approval of this with the subdivision, I don't see why...
Well, wait a minute, I don't know that we specified with subdivision, it was... No, I never understood that we were proposing subdivisions, so just to clarify that.
Okay, well, I wanna hear that, so I'm not sure. But anyways, I mean, I've looked at it, and it's, I mean, well, this is about the third time I've looked at it, because they appeared twice before the BZA, and here it is again. So I don't think we need to have a public hearing on it, it's not required by the ordinance, I think we oughta pass it on the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
This is the only two dwellings that would be on that parcel?
Well, no, there are...
There are two other ones, one of them is prepared in Rachel at Water Penny Farm, and the other one is that teeny little shed that their interns live in, and they called that a dwelling, and they built it, so...
So we make four dwellings on 800 acres?
Yeah.
But it's still one parcel.
I don't like to do math in public, but even I can do that.
It's still one parcel, there has to be some sort of language attached to it, that would say, in the event of, you know, something in the future where the property would be subdivided, and then we bring it back in compliance with the ordinance.
Well, they would have to do that anyway, wouldn't they?
I don't know, strange, stranger things have happened.
They got 800 acres of land, and 128 says a density of, you know, as long as you don't go past a density of 150, I don't even know why we're talking about this.
I don't either, let's have a motion, dude.
With that emotion that you made, Mr. Connie?
Well, no, I'm asking for...
No, but you've got two... You've got parallel ordinances, one is that it has to be a special exception for more than one dwelling per lot.
Or tract, you know.
So it wouldn't matter what the size of the parcel is, you're not looking at the density at the same time you're looking at the number of dwellings.
Well, that's one of the considerations that you would take into account. I mean, if somebody came in with a five acre lot, wanted to have two dwellings on a lot, you'd say, no, you're violating the...
Right.
The density, but if you have 800 acres, and then at some future time, if they would try to somehow subdivide, plus, it's subject to, what do you call it, some kind of seismic easement, right?
DOF easement.
Right, so they can't subdivide it anyway into less than what?
You could have six, about 600 acres is an easement, and you may have six significant houses on that 600 acres, and 12...
Yeah, he's asking about subdivision, I, to be honest, I don't know that.
Okay, but...
See, wouldn't it be...
No, we can't.
I mean, each one of those houses could be peeled off onto a 25 acre lot, that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Well, I was gonna say, but I think there needs to be some sort of language attached to the deed or something, so that somebody in the future will see that it has to comply with the ordinance.
It seems to be, but I make...
Why would you be exempt from the ordinance?
They're not exempt.
But he just asked me the question, and we really shouldn't be carrying on this conversation, it should be directed to them.
But the thing is, sometime in the future, something may change, and somebody tries to subdivide, and you wind up getting three or four houses on one lot. Because we don't have something attached to the deed, or, you know, like a deed restriction or something to bring a flag to say, hey, this still needs to comply with the one dwelling per 25 density, and no more than one dwelling per lot unless there's a special exception. You're looking at four, basically four dwellings on a parcel, right, that's what you just said.
Yeah.
But those are already there. No, these are two new ones, right?
Two new ones, yeah.
Right, so this is what's putting it over, there needs to be something to track this, look at all the problems we've had for the last 20 or 30 years, where stuff didn't get tracked properly, now all of a sudden, things just show up and we say, how did that happen? We need to make sure that that doesn't happen, that's all I'm saying.
Can I ask what conditions were placed on the permit at all at BZA?
There's one, that they had to get this permit.
What other conditions were?
Standard...
Life safety conditions.
Fire extinguishers and landlines.
That's because it's a tourist home.
Right.
Wouldn't this, although, apply towards a density of development, that if there was two houses built, seems to me that if there's two houses on a lot, that takes two of those development rights or density rights away from that parcel. Correct?
I'm not sure what you mean, I mean, you take the number of dwellings, which is, which this would make four, and you divide it into 800, and if you get less than 25, then now it'd say you've got an issue. But here, four into 800...
I understand that.
Is 200, isn't it?
Actually, I think it's 200.
So that's 200, okay.
I'm just trying to say...
I don't think it's an issue, in this particular case.
I understand we need to make sure it's not.
I'm sensing that what Mr. Fraser's getting at is that, you know, we don't wanna have, you wanna have some documentation that two houses were allowed on this parcel, so that it reduces the division rights...
Overall.
Overall, of that, by two rights to that parcel.
And the DOF, the DOF division rights are obviously no good than 25 acres, but we're one for 100 acres, so...
It seems to me that that would be an issue if we did require them to split the 10 acre lots, that's not an issue if this doesn't involve...
It's just a special exception for...
A subdivision, so to me, we're avoiding those problems in addition to the possible additional development pressures if we were to force them to subdivide the lots, so I feel like we're sort of talking backwards about this thing, and all we need to do is recommend that in addition to the approval that we've already recommended, that we recommend that it be approved to have four dwelling units on one lot. And I think it's up to, I think tradition would have this issue.
All right, right, sorry about that.
That's okay, I've lost, I've lost track on whether we're discussing this or making a motion first, but if...
Still trying to get a motion.
All right, for purposes of discussion, I will move to schedule this for a public hearing.
For us?
Yes.
We don't have to have a public hearing, we just make a motion to recommend approval and settle it over to the board of supervisors, and let them have the public hearing.
We could do that, but that's not my motion.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you understood that.
Thank you. My motion is to schedule this for a public hearing at our next planning commission meeting. That's a motion, and the reason I make that motion is because there seems to be a lot of discussion here, so if we resolve this, all the questions here, I'll be happy to amend that motion to the board of supervisors, but that's...
Oh, I see, you'll amend it later, gotcha. Is there a second? Second. All right, so any discussion on the motion? Or any further discussion that we didn't already hear?
Yeah, if I could ask the applicant, so you have, you have the two water penny houses on these, how about the other houses on your property there?
They're not the same parcel.
They're not the same parcel.
Different parcel.
Okay, so this 800, essentially 800 acre parcel is just gonna be the four houses at the moment, the two water penny and this one?
That's correct.
I see, okay.
Two existing and two additional. And it's on the other side of the road, too, isn't it? So these two parcels are actually, I'm sorry, these two proposed dwelling units are on the same tract of land, but the tract is bifurcated by two group 211, so they're, for all intents and purposes, are sort of on a different part of the property anyway. It's not like, you know, a subdivision or something.
So the conservation easement that covers this parcel is, does that cover the whole property, or is it just for this parcel? How does the conservation easement you have work on this parcel?
Hey, it's on the proposed, for the parcel that we're proposing, and that's roughly 600 acres is in the DOF easement.
Okay, so 600 acres out of this 800 acres is in the DOF easement?
Yes.
And that DOF easement is the one that gives you your restrictions about...
It's a little more complex, and there's 54 acres that is not... You take 54 and add it to the 800, and that's how many acres we got. So the 54 are also under DOF, as 600, they're part of the 604, across where Water Penny is, is not under the DOF easement.
So this entire tract is not under the easement, only part of it. The part of it, not part of it on the south side of 211 is under the easement along, okay?
And this, where these houses are proposed, is in the easement.
Yes, sir.
And DOF is agreed with this, or is agreeable with?
Yes.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, so the, thank you, the houses themselves, you've given us a great design, you've been around this barn a few times now, and you all have created a great record at this point, and, you know, but I just, one other question, so the design, the houses, and the visibility from other parts, could you just address that?
Other parts of...
Other parts of, you know, down 211, other parts of Sperryville, for example, just the visibility of the proposed houses?
Well, the proposed design is a single-story design, you filed, you should have a site plan, and you should also have drawings of the houses themselves. Have you seen that?
I've seen that, yeah, thanks, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, I didn't get a chance to look at it really from other areas, it looks like that's gonna be a pretty, not a very visible property from other locations, but I just wanted you to confirm that.
No, I mean, they're designed to blend in, they're not super high, they're closest neighbors, 700 yards away, flat roof. They're single-story, low-profile, low-impact.
So my, I guess the question that I would have is, if there are, you know, these are properties that are not yet built, if there are any conditions we would wanna attach to the permit, I mean, I know it's, they've provided a great record, I totally support what the Millers are doing, I think, as a resident of Sperryville for many, many years, and the county, I have to say, I applaud what they've done and what they're trying to do, so I would like very much to be supportive of this, I just wanna make sure, there's a lot going on in Sperryville and a lot that's planned to go on in Sperryville, and I, no more than Mr. Connie, I wanna make sure we do these things right, and...
Let's go for a walk on Friday, you know, shows.
Well, as far as conditions go, too, I could think of this, and maybe that would address Mr. Fraser's concern, that if at any time in the future, these houses would be, or the lot, the land on which they're located would be subdivided, that the lot be not less than a certain number of acres, 25, 50, or whatever you wanna say.
Well, whatever the current zoning densities are.
Right.
Well, that would have to be addressed at that time.
Well, that they, in other words, they couldn't, they couldn't do that without coming back, if the conditions...
They couldn't anyway, could they?
Stranger things have happened. Wait a minute, they have an administrative right to come in and subdivide. Sure they do, as long as there are a certain number of lots, and if you dump more than five lots, it's not a subdivision, and the properties are over 25 acres.
No, they don't have to be over 25 acres, it's a business.
To be an administrative subdivision. They could come in to Michelle's office with the plans, right, and if it's over 25 acres...
Fifty.
All right, well, that's what it is now, but if you wanna put a permanent condition on it, that they would have to come back if they're gonna subdivide, you could do that. Wait, I'm just saying what you could do. And the other thing that I see it could do is the houses are what they designed, but if they enlarge them, they would also have to come back. But other than that, I don't see what other conditions you could put on it.
If I made the motion is to go to public hearing, and on that point, I feel like while the commission kind of accepted this notion, and at least in my mind, the idea was never to subdivide this, and I think I would be more supportive of, would have been more supportive of it without the subdivision than with the subdivision. But having said that, this additional attention to the multiple dwelling units per lot is a bit new and different. And therefore, I think Ms. Ishi's idea of taking this to another public hearing is not a bad idea because I think there is a possibility of some precedent setting there that may not be obvious to us now and might come up in the context of public hearing. So, you know, I feel like the idea of additional conditions is something we will address, we can address later. But the motion before us now is to move it to a hearing.
Why can't we address it now? I mean, who do you think will show up at the public hearing, Mrs. O'Leary, tonight?
Well, who knows? That's why we have a couple...
Arms!
We're not, the conditions are what we put in a motion to recommend approval. The motion before us is the motion to have a public hearing. Just saying they're two different things.
So you're, that's your, sticking with your motion? Let's vote on it.
The motion is a hearing at the planning commission level.
Yeah, right, correct, next month. Okay, that's the motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got some more discussion.
Go ahead.
You know, I think it needs to be some common sense applied. We recognize that the larger a parcel becomes, the more rights that property has and the less impact a use of that property would have on the sound of an area. And when you look at eight hundred acres and you're talking about four houses, that is no impact. No impact. And they're going to be two small houses, flat roofs, going to blend in. They're doing everything that they could possibly address. And they have a track record of this. You know, we're blowing this thing way out of proportion. This should take like three minutes to say yes, send it to the board with a recommendation, let the board of supervisors approve it. I mean, this is a no-brainer on this level of activity on this property. This is just a waste of time. And it's a waste of time for the applicant, put him to a public hearing at the planning commission level. It should go to the board, let the board do it and approve it. I mean, this is no use of that property, no use of that property. There's a number of farms around this county where tenant houses have been built in the last twenty years, have been built next to each other, you know, out in the open next to the road where there's no driveway required to be built, Sheridan Wells, and all kinds of stuff like this. And, you know, that was on the big tracks. Is that bad? I don't think so. It was housing for people that worked on the farm. And, you know, for this situation here, eight hundred acres and we're all concerned about the vision and appearance and all this stuff, it's in the easement? At easement, they do an inspection every year or two on the property, you know, by the DOF that's going to say if they're doing anything wrong. And their easement's a lot more restrictive than our zoning ordinance is. So let them go and do what they want to do. Gosh. I feel like I'm in Fairfax. Yeah.
All right, well, I... Low word for...
I don't know.
I don't feel like I'm in Fairfax, but anyway.
Getting close to the border.
I agree with what Mr. Henry said, and I think we can formulate some conditions and if you want to put any on there and recommend the conditions. And the board supervisors are free to make up their own conditions. So I'm going to offer an amendment to Ms. Ishi's motion that we do exactly that, that we, instead of having a public hearing, that we forward this to the board supervisors with the recommendation of approval, subject to conditions that they seem fit, if any, them coming back for further approval if they either enlarge either of these two houses or they subdivide the property. So, does anybody want a second amendment?
That too is a waste. I mean, if they enlarge it or subdivide...
I said, "if any" condition like that, if necessary.
You don't need to put that on there. It'd be subject to whatever the regulations are at that time, whether it's two acres, three, five, fifty, whatever. It's whatever is required at that time. We don't need to put a stipulation on it.
All right, I'll take that part out.
Well, I do think that we have this issue every time an applicant comes in with a specific design and a lot of sensitivities that they put forward. But if we don't make those, the application condition on them actually doing it the way they said they're going to do it, I don't know that they are bound by that. So as a general rule, I'd have felt like it's coming on us to have the substantive design matters in the application be conditions of the permit. Otherwise, I'm not sure what grounds we have if they decide, "Oh, well, never mind, I want to do a three-story octagonal property." So I don't know what the legal issues are on that. It's always been a question in my mind, but when, you know, in my view...
If I think about it, I think what you said in the beginning is exactly right. If there's no conditions put on it, you just say two dwellings or four dwellings or more than one dwelling, however many it is on a lot, and they build those dwellings, if you didn't make a condition that's going to be those particular dwellings...
That's what I think we should do.
Then they can build two Taj Mahals there, or they can build two chicken coops, or anything in between.
I think this is still United States of America, they've got property rights.
I agree with them. I agree with them.
They have a dwelling.
But they can't have more than one dwelling on a lot without getting approval.
That's all that we should address, is one, is a dwelling.
No matter what dwelling they put up.
Well, they've already said what dwelling they're going to put up. And if they wanted to change that...
What if they, what if they seven and some person from Fairfax comes here and decides to...
People buy houses and make modifications to them all the time. They don't get a building permit. They put a second story, they put an addition, whatever. It's a matter of a property right.
All right.
Can I ask the applicant how they feel, and, you know, I've been interested in your actual feedback on this, with a condition that would, that if you change, you know, the design, you would come back? In other words, being, having the approval be based on the design?
We're going to know what we say we're going to build.
Yeah. So you would be okay with a condition that approved it as designed?
It's not ridiculously restrictive. We're going to know what we're saying. We get up there and the contractor says, "Well, it's better if it's a foot longer." We're going to build what we told you to build, and that's fine.
So you're okay with the conditions that I suggested?
I will just say that the subdivision part of the second condition, I think they will have to come back and do whatever they have to do according to the zoning ordinance is I think the design and what they say they're going to build is what's in flux here a little bit. Can I also ask, would it, I mean, I would be content with approving that tonight, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to, I think what you're doing is a great thing. So I don't want to make it so restrictive that it's going to impede what you're trying to do. So I think what you have here, the scale is perfect, as everybody's been saying. You've got, you know, eight hundred acres here. You've got, there are no, there's, you're not, there's no, you're not close to any other property owners, you're well back from your own property lines, you've got access on your own property. I mean, everything about this is good. So if you're willing to, if you're comfortable with that condition, I would be comfortable in amending my motion to move this on to the board tonight. But if you want to, if you want to think about that...
No, we're ready to do it.
Then I'm willing to amend my motion to say, to move it on to the board of supervisors with a recommendation that it be approved as designed by the applicant.
Just within, to build those two particular houses that they submitted?
If they're comfortable with that, yeah.
Well, okay, is there second to the amendment?
I will second that, but could I also ask a question, though? Because on this matter of the requirement of a special exception and the reason that this got kicked back to us, I'm still a little thrown off by that. And I want to make sure I understand the precedent. Is it a general provision that says for, what is the provision that required a special exception for more than one dwelling unit on a park?
Because when it came out of the planning commission the last time or the first time, as I under, well, I'm not sure, I think it went back and forth. I can't remember the tortured history of this precisely. I can remember what happened at BZA. They came to the BZA and they wanted to subdivide. Because they were told they had to sub, they didn't want to subdivide, but that's what they were told. They couldn't. And so the BZA or the brilliant ones who brought up that, "Well, if you apply for an SE permit, then you wouldn't have to subdivide." And since they didn't want to subdivide, they accepted those conditions, much like they're accepting the cases of the proposed one.
So the special exception is not to have multiple dwellings on a property?
Yes, it is.
So what is that provision that we're, why is, was the problem that you identified solved by their getting a special exception permit? That is the part that is still unclear to me.
Because Michelle and Art Goff came up with that they had to subdivide, have a minimum of ten acres.
And how is that not the case by some provision of our code?
Because if they got an SE permit, then they can have more than one dwelling on a lot.
Is that in our subdivision ordinance somewhere?
No, it's in our zoning ordinance.
Subdivision, that's what I'm looking for.
Or it says right up there, it's actually, what does it say?
Pursuant to section...
One thirty-six A.
One thirty-six A?
Allows more than one dwelling unit, one dwelling in a lot of parcels is a special exception and acts on the rules.
Okay, so that is a general provision, others on, so that allows this...
So it was another way to get to the same place without subdividing?
Excellent, thank you. Now I'm perfectly ready to go.
Okay, so the motion is to forward it to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval, subject to only whatever plans they built for those two particular dwellings. That's the motion that's been seconded, or the amendment's been seconded by Mr. Light. Any further discussion? All in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
No, say no. I vote aye too, so it's in heavens. What did you vote?
Oh, good.
All right. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. All right. Report and sit, no more? All right, next. What's next on the agenda? Finally, the rules of procedure. Everyone's been over with a fine tooth comb. I'm so pleased that everyone spent so much time reading these and editing them because since nineteen sixty-six, the planning commission didn't have any rules. So, the rules that are up on the screen are a little bit different. I made the change, some changes that Mr. Curry suggested. Good night, Mr. Irwin, thank you for coming. So, hopefully there are no further nits or bats.
There are. Sorry. So if I may, I guess a couple of the things, one of the things that you brought up and I appreciate that you addressed, or the discussion we had about work sessions, but... Chairman, we're having multiple discussions.
Mr. Light has the floor, yes, sir.
The, we have a discussion about this, what I consider the special nature of work sessions.
Right.
And you essentially reworded this so that when I read it, special meetings and work sessions are synonymous, which was not my intentional, like, I think that was the nature of the discussion we had. My understanding is that work sessions are a specific type of a special meeting and the unique nature of a work session is that any product or results of that work session will be considered by the commission for a formal decision or approval at the next regular scheduled meeting. The concern here is that because...
That's still in there?
That's not in there. You've just equated, I don't see any place for that with that. The only thing, and my concern here, and I think we...
I thought it said, it's still sent, provided it'll go over.
I don't see that anywhere. If I missed that, I'm sorry.
So what do you want to add back in?
I want to put that any products or results of a work session will be considered for by the commission for a formal approval at the next regularly scheduled meeting. There's nothing right now that limits the action that we take in a work session. And that, given the way we can call these on short notice during the day, I want work sessions to have limited decision associated with them.
Okay, so what's your proposed addition?
At the end of that paragraph...
Three point three.
At the end of three point three...
You getting this down? Good.
And again, I don't claim that this is the most elegant prose possible, but the way I have it, any products or results of work sessions will be considered for commission decisions for formal approval at the next regular meeting.
How about just saying no formal action on any business will be taken in a work session?
That's fun, too. I guess the...
I think Gary's is wrong, I think. Yeah, he is.
Well, my thought was, I thought the reason perhaps that you didn't want to do this is I'm not sure, I mean, I don't want us to not have votes. We can vote to, you know, get consensus on a work topic. To me, the question is, we shouldn't advance something to the public or to the BZA or to the... So I, I thought you, I'm fine, I actually agree with your wording of it, but it's not here now and I drafted it the way I thought it worked.
Okay, so you want to add, and the three point three, no formal action on any pending matter will be taken...
At a work session.
At a work session.
That does it for me to...
Or how about, all right, fine. That's it. No formal action will be taken on any pending matter or application at a work session until the commission's next regular meeting.
Well, that's redundant. I mean, it can't happen in a work session. I think it's just in meetings. Well, I'm sorry, I thought it was...
All right, anything else?
Yes. On the matter of the quorum, I feel like this has come up several times, that we talked about quorum in multiple places. I think the cleanest way to deal with what is currently in three dash four is to scratch the first part that says what a quorum is and make the rest of what is currently three, four, beginning with, "No action of commission shall be valid unless authorized by a majority vote of those present." Make that item five, four, under the session, article one.
Oh, but that's not the way it works. If you have a quorum... Oh, I see, five is quorum.
Five is quorum, and I think it's sort of confusing to have quorum in two places.
It's harder.
So...
Because I stole this from somewhere else. So you want to take three, four out?
I want to, I want to keep the last half of three, four, beginning of the...
So you want to put a capital N on no?
No, and make that five, four, at the end of quorum. So now it's saying, "We can't do anything..."
So three, four is only going to say, "No action..."
Three, four goes away.
Oh, and you're just going to take that sentence out of three, four and put it...
And make it five, four.
Okay, got it. Five, one, doesn't do the same thing?
No, because it just talks about what a majority is. I don't see anything in five currently that says, "We can't do anything without a majority." I still don't see anything else that replaces the point of the last half of what is currently three, four. I just think it's in the wrong place.
A majority of the membership is a quorum. No action can be taken except to adjourn the meeting if you don't have a quorum.
That's not what this says. This says actions should be...
Why, why doesn't it...
This is a different matter. This is not what constitutes a quorum. A quorum gets you a meeting. Action is a vote of the majority present.
Right.
Two different things.
That has already spelled out?
It isn't anywhere other than the...
I think five, two is where it should go. And there's, it says that twice, "A majority of the members present..."
Well, it just continues to refer to a quorum, but yes, I think you're right.
It's not a quorum for the purpose of adjourned the meeting, okay.
It only refers to adjourned the meeting.
All right, so five, four is going to be the old five, three, four?
The last half of three, four.
Right.
And now I think it's all there in one place.
Okay, right. Done.
And then finally, I think there's been some, I'm sorry, if I... Go ahead, get on that. I think there's been some back and forth about the Robert's Rules of Order. And while I kind of get the value of that, I think some of the discussion has made me think about it. And I guess I would like to propose that instead of allowing ourselves to get wrapped around Robert's Rules of Order, as I think we demonstrated tonight, we have the potential to get sort of wrapped around small axles. I would say that instead of taking ourselves into Robert's, that we replace that with, to the extent not designated otherwise herein...
Where are you?
In three dash five.
Sorry, that's out now, is it?
Not in the draft that you sent.
Oh. Oh.
Three, five.
Okay.
So, it currently reads, to the extent not designated otherwise herein, the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. I would say instead, to the extent not designated otherwise herein, the express will of the majority of the commissioners present, so that we can just, that a majority can deal with...
Well, what if, why isn't that taken care of by the, by the, let's see, ten dash two, suspension? Except where it would be blah, 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 these rules may be suspended by a majority, by a majority vote of the members present in voting. Well, as long as it's not in violation of the code, the constitution, or the Rappahanna County, Rappahanna County Code of Ordinances, why doesn't that take care of it? So even Robert's Rules, you could suspend them too. You could suspend, in other words, rule three, five.
Well, because this is at the next regular meeting, following a regular meeting, which notices a motion to amend was given.
Yeah, I, I just feel like putting us at the will of the rules of Robert's Rules of Order...
Where did you just read?
I'm reading from ten, one.
Ten, one. Ten, one is amendment. I'm not talking about amendment. Ten, two is suspension. So, except where it would be incoherent with the code or the ordinance, these rules may be suspended by a majority vote of the members present in voting. The motion to suspend a rule made by any member and properly seconded may be discussed and voted upon. The approval of a motion to suspend a rule shall not permit them to violate any of it, blah, blah, blah. So why doesn't that do? You could suspend rule three, five, so...
So in other words, if we get into bickering about Robert's Rules of Order, we can vote...
When nobody has a copy, we can suspend the rules.
We can suspend the rules and agree by a majority.
Yes, correct, exactly.
Okay. I think we should get rid of Robert's Rules of Order, but that does have the same effect.
That's a dangerous composition, to get rid of Robert's Rules of Order.
We just said, by the majority of the commissioners present, so we can make it on the fly.
Can I just ask, that's a good point, I, you know, Robert's Rules are complicated, and David obviously knows them very well, so that's great. I know them a little bit, just enough to be wrong both of the time, but...
I just know them well enough to pull off that I know them well, as well as you think. That's why I'm going to go with...
So, but, but I just, more a question. So how, how has the planning commission done it in the past? Have you...
They've invented many rules. They did whatever the chairman said.
We didn't go by Robert's Rules for the past...
Then we go along the line.
Chairman's rules.
Maybe, maybe it should go back to not having any rules, but the statute says we have to have. I don't care. Let's just get it done, so that's what...
I, I, I'm fine with that provision.
I say, we sort of went over this when you weren't here, and that was the issue. I just said, well, you can just suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm...
If somebody brings up something from Robert's Rules that's applicable, and the majority of the members don't like it, somebody just makes a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, my only other item, and I promise I'm almost finished, is, we also recall after our last discussion that we felt that there should be the opportunity to, for the commissioners to ask questions of the applicant or his own administrator before there's a motion. So, I thought that you...
No, that's the way it says. That's what it says now, that they can ask questions, but then, after that...
Sorry, go ahead. Where did you say we're going to ask questions?
Conduct of commission meeting? I think so, yeah. It says, seven dash three. One of those subsets.
So, three, um, one, two, three.
D, I, two, three.
Not D one, D one says it calls in the zoning.
Yeah, there you go. The chair shall afford each member...
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
...an opportunity to ask questions of the district and or applicant.
Thank you. So that's satisfied with that.
Alright, with those two amendments, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Good, someone make a motion to approve those amendments.
I move that we approve the rules of procedure as amended.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Alright.
Did everybody vote? So is it seven to nothing? Because Al, did you vote? I'm sorry, I just didn't see you.
Yeah, we have to, let's take a roll call vote, because that's a...
I'll vote it, yes.
Okay, alright.
Alright, let's take a roll call vote. Mr. Fraser, on the vote to approve the rules. Mr. Shuland?
Aye.
Ms. Ishii?
Aye.
Mr. Coller?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
No.
See?
Just because she ran her mouth, I voted no.
Mr. Conick says aye.
You're going to get the headline.
Good. We should know where it is, sir.
New rules approved, though, for Henry's... Alright. We got to schedule our, we can have a work session to collaborate next Thursday, because the BZA meeting is getting canceled, isn't it?
It is, good.
It has, I think that with actual formal notice, it's been twenty-nine emails ago. I think we am, or I feel like we could.
Chairman, you know me, this is...
He did, okay. So how about, how does that work for everybody?
What day is it next?
Next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, the, whatever, wherever we are on the, on the comp plan. And everyone's on...
That is pretty late in the day.
Done. Four, three?
We'll make it two late, because the show has come.
I would go for four.
Is that good for everybody?
What, what, again, what's the date, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth is coming Wednesday.
The twenty-sixth, the fourth, or the fourth?
Four o'clock, so...
Two a.m. Five a.m., what time is it? What?
We have that planning, we have that seminar on the twenty-seventh. I'll leave it, I'll leave it in the night before.
Harrison?
Yeah.
Only takes an hour and a half, we've got plenty of time.
I'll go, I'll go. One will be in the night before.
Alright.
How long does the meeting gonna be?
Two a.m.
The library's available?
What?
The library's available?
I'll check on it.
Oh, that's good.
Put over, operations.
Yeah.
I mean, but there's a trial here, and so we can't have it here. Who does that have the ear on?
Fine, it's available, it's just, you obviously need a daytime employee, it says you're FOIA officer.
Who is our FOIA?
Me.